...us now, our speaker. Hi Lynn, how are you? Oops, sorry, we have you on mute. There we go. How are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, we're good, thank you.
You're joining me here.
Thank you for being our guest speaker today, we appreciate it. I said, "We're just gonna give it a few more minutes." We did have, we had about 20 register, we had a couple canceled at the last minute. So, we're just gonna let the room fill up just a little bit, and then we'll get started in about three minutes. If we want, though, we can go around, we have a small enough group where we can go around and do a little bit of an introduction. Paul, do you wanna start? I'm gonna unmute, well, I can unmute you, but you can unmute you.
Got it, okay. So, I'm Paul Sapienza, I'm the Director of Finance for RBA, I'm part-time on staff. And I own a bakery on Long Island, New York, that I took over from my parents in 1973. And my son is in the process of taking it over now from my wife and I, so I'm kinda semi-retired from that. But I'm still very active at the bakery. Instead of being there 50, 60 hours a week, I'm only there 40 hours a week now.
Wow, yeah.
Retirement.
Then, that's the life of bakers, you know?
Right.
Works out alright.
And do we wanna head, um, and I apologize, I know this is Janice's brother and I can't think of your first name, I'm so sorry.
No, I'm the husband.
The husband, I'm sorry, husband.
Yeah, my, my, I'm a SOB, I'm a son of a brother. We own Three Brothers Bakery, and I'm the fifth generation in my family to be in the bakery business. And I'm semi-retired now. I'm like, I'm like Paul, I work 40 hours a week and it's great.
Welcome to the-
I'm sorry?
Welcome to the Just 40 Club, Just 40 Hours a Week Club.
Thanks, thanks.
Lauren, do you wanna go?
We're, we're in Houston, Texas.
Oh, sorry.
And, and, um, we're, we're hoping we don't flood today. This'll be our, our fourth flood if we, fifth flood if we, if we flood, so... We're hoping we don't flood today.
And how many-
It's about three feet from the top of the bio before we flood, so we're pretty close.
Good luck.
Agreed.
How many locations do you have? Are they all in floodplain area, or?
Uh, we have three, and, uh, really, all of them are susceptible to it. Uh, one of them is right up against the back of a bio, so, um, it's not a good situation, it just keeps overflowing. Too much water, too much concrete, so...
Good luck today, and tomorrow.
Thanks.
Um, Lauren? Okay, so, um, I am right now the, like, Production Manager at Rhinlander Bakery, but my husband and I are currently, uh, under contract to take over the business from Mauro and Ed Dimmer, who are retiring in February. They're like semi-retired right now, so they've been, uh, they were supposed to be gone like all year, but then, uh, COVID and everything, they were here a little more than expected, because they couldn't really leave town. But now, we're pretty much running all the day-to-day operations at this point, and they just handle, um, some of the admin and stuff that hasn't been, like, turned over to us yet, but, um, I've worked here for about 10 years, so I pretty much know everything about the business, besides the admin at this point, so...
Lauren, what's the name of your bakery and why are you located?
Uh, Rhinlander Bakery, in Arvada, Colorado.
Oh, nice, yeah.
Lynn from Bakerpedia, I'm gonna skip over you, because we'll do your introduction in just a minute.
No, that's Lynn, that's the other Lynn.
Right, I was gonna say, L-I-N, we're gonna skip over you, L-Y-N-N, we're going to you.
Hi, sorry you don't have the video on, I'm Lynn Sherman, I'm, uh, Director of Education for the RBA and owner of Cold Spring Bakery in Cold Spring, Minnesota. And I'm not semi-retired yet, so I get to still work 60 hours a week. Back up to about 100% of normal sales, and I'm spending all my time trying to hire people and not finding very many.
Well, that, that's a good problem to have.
Uh, yes and no.
Heidi, we're coming down to you.
My name's Heidi, and I am new to the bakery space, and, um, I'm working with a group of consultants, and we, uh, help with new product development. And so, I'm trying, I'm on the business side, and I'm trying to just gain some knowledge about bakery and, um, needs and, you know, just some of these emerging trends, I was excited to hear about it.
Great, thank you. Marissa?
Hi, I'm here, I'm gonna try my video too. Am I there?
Yes, you are, hi.
Hi. I am Marissa Beely, and I'm the Certification Coordinator at RBA. And right now, you might hear Mickey Mouse in the background, because we're in the Wild West, my children are sick. But, um, I'm with, on staff at the RBA.
Thank you, Marissa. Brian? Brian, I'm gonna, can you, can you unmute? Okay, we're gonna go to Sarah, Sarah, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, Sarah. Sarah, do you wanna just tell us where you're from and your bakery?
Um, I'm in Houston, and I own Dessert Gallery Bakery Cafe.
Very good, thank you, Sarah. So, now I am going to pass it over to L-I-N. Lynn from Bakerpedia, and Lynn, we always appreciate when you are part of our education program, because you are a wealth of knowledge, so I'm gonna pass it on over to you, and take it away.
A slide.
Hey, um, welcome, everyone, so, this is going to be an interesting session, so please feel free to place any comments or questions onto the chat box, so that's where I'm gonna look at for comments. I can address, so I can address them all at once at the end of my speech or, you know, presentation. I know your time is valuable, so here I go. I'm a foodie and entrepreneur, a baking influencer, an OSU buckeye with an undergrad in Food Science, and a KSU power cat with a PhD in Grain Science, so sometimes I'm just a buckcat, okay? Don't know which team to root for, but I'm there for both of them. I'm also a certified worst mom in the world by my two teenagers, two teenage boys, and have been awarded the best mom in the world by my pre-teen. So, love your kids before they're teenagers, because those years are really, really, really precious, okay? I'm here today to share my story, and, um, to also, uh, give you a glimpse of what I see, um, from top-down in terms of Bakerpedia. So, when I started my professional career at Wendy's International, I was commercializing bond products at, at a few of the bond plants. I found this tremendous gap in information in the industry, and that was about a decade ago, when everybody was starting to use Google already, and I couldn't find anything on Google. So, um, after leaving Wendy's and joining Dave's Killer Bread, I ran the Technical Service Team, which included co-manufacturing, QA, R&amp;D, um, food and sanitation, uh, food safety and sanitation. I realized that, um, with that untrained workforce, because everybody was under this Second Chance Program, and we rehab, rehabilitated a lot of, uh, ex-falons. So, it was a much less trained workforce, and this gap was more disturbing than ever. But this is how Bakerpedia was created, because I was trying to find information to fill this gap, and I couldn't find, I couldn't find anything on Google. And Google only likes those, um, websites that are free, and the, the information is freely assessed, okay? So, a lot of membership websites are locked down. So, um, as you can see, that is part of our mission, is to make Google our best friend by not locking anything down, okay? So, today, we have over 1.8 million pages viewed every year, with an average of about six minutes a page. When someone can't find anything on Bakerpedia, they go to our comment page and they comment on, "Where's this, where's that?" So, as you can see, uh, we get a lot, we, we see a lot of the same comments coming in, when it comes to a particular trend, when it comes to a particular, uh, problem. So, um, I was just speaking to our Forum Manager this morning, because we, we pull Forum Fridays together, Mark and me will come together and talk about what's happening at our free forum. I was asking him, "Mark, where do you think all these people went to before they came, they came to our forum, or where were these questions asked before Bakerpedia was founded?" But, we don't know where they would go, but we are glad that they find us through Google. So, ever since we launched Encyclopedia, our sponsors have been asking for more, more blogs, more emails, you know? So, um, it's become the center of training for the commercial baking industry. And we managed to do this through sponsorships, and, um, how we, uh, how, how I settled on what to speak today is because I, I see, um, the common questions coming in, and lately, it's been a lot around plant proteins, a lot around egg replacement. So, I told them that I'm interested in talking about the vegan trend, okay? As I said, you know, if you, if you Google plant-based protein right now, a lot of companies out there are coming out this amazing technology to replace meat, cheese, dairy, and eggs, okay? And they are all plant-based, alright? So, um, you must wonder where, how did all this come about, right? If you follow the markets, uh, like I have, first, it was gluten-free, you know, then it's low carb and keto. And then, on the tailwinds of gluten-free and amazing gluten-free technologies like functional fibers, you know, low carb and keto was much easier to accomplish because of gluten-free, because of the technologies that gluten-free provided. Now, with all these technologies marrying up, you know, you get things like enzyme emulsifiers, um, gluten-free functional fibers, functional proteins. I feel like the market is now very ready for the next trend, which is veganism. So, um, why is vegan hot? Okay, if you Google, um, why do people go vegan on Google? Here is the number-one search, can anyone guess who the number-one search is? Anyone?
No clue.
Give it a shot?
Vegetarian, I think?
Uh, as, as the number-one reason, which website came up first as the number-one reason to go vegan?
PETA?
Yes.
Ah, nice.
Yes. Now you know who's good at search. PETA. Okay, the top 10 reasons given by PETA, okay? And, you know, usually with trends, I disagree wholeheartedly 75%, but I have to say, I'm not a PETA fan, but I agree with the top 10 reasons to, uh, go vegan, at least 80% of them, 80% of these top 10 reasons, okay? Just know that I'm, I'm, I'm a meat eater, and, uh, like, you know, me becoming a vegan is a very slim in this chance, uh, in my lifetime, and, uh, but I do agree to this top 10 reasons, okay? Then, number, number 10 reason is pigs are smarter than you think. So, they are playing on the human emotions, okay? All, a lot of, a lot of reasons they gave was playing a lot on the human emotions, as we know, marketing is human emotions, right? Okay, um, number nine, vegans are sexy, okay? If you've seen Instagram, if you've seen any of those Pinterest thing, you see vegan bodybuilder, right? So, all of them are making veganism really, really sexy right now. Number eight, all cool kids do it, alright? Number seven, save the planet. What can be more attractive to the younger generation than saving the planet? Number six, help feed the world. Now, this is a very, very valid reason, and I've gone into it and, and understand it a little bit more, yes, number six really makes sense, help feed the world, okay? Number five, meat is gross, okay? Now, fresh meat is fine, packaged meat could be a little gross, I agree with that. So, it really depends on the distribution chain and how the meat is processed, you know, it has a lot of bacteria, people get sick from meat, but that's not because of the meat, it's because of how companies are handling the meat after the fact that they sprout it, okay? So, I agree, meat is gross, meat can be gross, you know? Number four, vegan is delicious. I agree, I, have you seen a vegan cupcake? Oh my God, it tastes so good, right? So, um, vegan bakeries are really getting into this game and making things more delicious. A lot of the restaurants, we have one here in Portland, Oregon, that is called Lotus, it's a vegan restaurant. The prices are three times as much, but it's always packed, because they have made vegan so delicious, vegan meals are so delicious now. Number three, be healthier and be happier. Number two, slim down and lose weight. Now, they claim that vegans are 20 pounds lighter than most meat lovers. I don't know if I agree with that, but if you start taking proteins, um, that are non-meat, um, you tend to fill up more on fiber and a lot of all the other nutrients. So, I wouldn't argue that this, uh, this could be true, okay? Okay, the number-one reason to go vegan is, it's the best way to help animals. Again, marketing emotions, very convincing, okay? You can see this top 10 reasons, okay? If you're not baking vegan already, you'll be like, "Okay, maybe I should look into baking vegan, uh, options for people." So, um, it's not difficult, okay? Like I said, on the tailwind of gluten-free and keto, finding egg replacers, finding dairy replacers, it's not gonna be difficult. So, one of the things that I see at, that's targeted at bakery at your, at your level, uh, number one is eggs, okay? If you take a look at our egg replacement page, that's on Bakerpedia, you'll find all the options that you can use to replace the egg in your formula, okay? If your formula is egg-heavy, right, like, you, you, most of you would use the most eggs in something like a chiffon or a sponge cake. Now, those are a little more difficult to, um, replace, but it's not impossible if you do your testing with the proteins, gums, alpha cyclohexins, and the emulsifiers that I, um, talk about on the egg replacement page, okay? Now, going vegan is easy, and it's still a risk that you have to take. What if you develop a product at the retail end, and then people are trying to get used to it, and it sits on the shelf and it gets moldy, right? So, that's a risk of making, creating something that you have to throw away. Again, you know, PETA gave you 10 reasons, go use those 10 reasons, okay? To help you market your, your new product, okay? So, um, those are the points I wanted to touch on, and if you want me to go in-depth into the technology of each and every one of them, that's what the next, uh, hour is for. So, I just wanna give a, a shout-out to our sponsors, basically, because, um, without our sponsors, uh, Bakerpedia cannot be accomplished. Uh, we, uh, we appreciate sponsors like Rometics, Whacker Corp., and MGP Fiber, who have actually vegan solutions for you, so check them out on our sponsor showcase. Alright, so, I'm open to questions, if you guys have any.
Lynn, can I start with a question? You're talking about replacements, and I think that's the biggest deterrent when it comes to starting a new line or starting a new product, is, I think people who aren't already, like gluten-free or vegan, it's very intimidating to think, like, you had mentioned the gums and the emulsifiers and things like that. So, can you go a little bit more into, like, what testing you've done, or what products might, you know, just be, besides the egg replacement, what else you need to throw in there to sort of even begin to think about it?
Okay, so the first thing that I did wrongly when I tried to do a replacement is I didn't keep an eye on viscosity, okay? Um, this is the number-one, uh, reasons why, uh, the first few experiments I got was a huge amount of tunneling within the cupcakes. And you can, you can view this experiment on YouTube, on our Bakerpedia TV page on YouTube, just search, uh, egg replacement. The, the issue there is not just foaming, when you replace eggs, you know, um, you also replace the viscosity of eggs when it gets to its gelling point, it's very viscous, and it holds the bubbles down, okay? So, you need to put in gums as well, or some kind of, uh, viscosity, um, fiber-causing ingredient that helps keeps the viscosity stable, and the bubbles doesn't rise during the baking. That is the number-one issue, when you try to convert from a full egg formula to a non-egg formula, you, you get a lot of tunnels. So, that's, you know, that's something that you have to, uh, try, keep trying to, uh, increase the viscosity, if you get a lot of tunneling. Tunneling is number-one problem. Anybody else?
I'm gonna open it up here, I can't unmute everybody unfortunately, if you unmute yourself, so if you'd like to unmute yourself and ask a question, um, that would be great. I know a lot of this, when people do, um, vegan, you know, it all depends too on what area you're in, if there's a need for it, if there's, um, you know, a request for it, that kinda thing. So, I think sometimes people just say, like, "Ugh, it's too much work," but really, like Lynn was saying, it's the next generation of who's coming into your bakery, so these are things that we really need to start doing now. So, um, does anybody have a question about, or has anybody tried before to do some vegan stuff in their bakery, or even the gluten-free's and?
Yeah, we're, we're making vegan cakes, and we, of course, then have to do vegan buttercream to go with it, because, um, customers expect the icing to be vegan also. So, we've mastered that, now we have people asking for a chocolate buttercream, and I don't think we've figured out a formula for that one yet, because-
Have you tried, uh, alpha cyclohexins?
No, we haven't.
We have a formula on Bakerpedia, if you, you wanna go check it out, it's called Tropical Chocolate Frosting, and that is-
Okay.
It's tropical, because it can handle tropical, um, temperatures, um, so it can sit outside without melting, using alpha cyclohexins. And I have made a vegan, that, that, that is actually a vegan formula frosting. So, um, yeah.
You'll check that out?
Yeah, you need, the thing about alpha cyclohexins is it needs a, a special method to, um, melt it and, and make it in an emulsifier, so it's not an emulsifier, you have to make it nice emulsifier. And to get there, you have to give it a heat treatment, and you get, have to have, give it an eration treatment with starch. So, you gotta heat it first in a solution and introduce it to starch, then it will start forming, um, the emulsion between air and oil. So, that's, um, that's one of the most amazing new technologies that I've seen in the last five years for the baking industry. And it's by Whacker Corp.
One of the questions I have then is, where do you get some of the emulsifiers and then some of the different, um, items that are mentioned on your website? Because as a small, well, I mean, I have a smaller wholesale bakery compared to, you know, the big guys, but we can't buy small quantities. A lot of the companies that we've been talking to, they wanna sell us a pallet of products, but I can't handle that. Where can I get some of these other items?
Oh, that's a great question, well, you know what, let me ask them. Let me ask them, okay? And then I will, um, get the information back to Bernadette, for her to share. I'm, I'm pretty sure yours is not the first, um, first, uh, query of this sort. Whacker also works with, uh, smaller distributors like, uh, Dawn Foods and, um, and, uh, CMS and Pirato's, so their product will go through these, those channels as well.
Okay, yeah, we buy a lot from them.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question about shortening.
Alright.
You know, since they changed the triglycerides out of the shortenings, it's changed a lot of our formulas and the way that they react, and, um, yes, it's good for the customers, but they, they, uh, they call and say, "I want it the way it was." "I want, I want it back the way it was, I don't like the way it tastes." And you say, "Well, it's to be better for you." And they took these triglycerides out to make it better for you, and I'm trying to figure out, how do we get that same mouthfeel and the same type of, uh, texture when you take out the triglycerides? Is there something to substitute that, that is okay for people, that lets you, um, lets your customers, and, and also for us, make our cake the way we used to have it, because it was perfect? Now, it's not so perfect, and so, maybe you could answer that?
Yeah, uh, maybe you could give me an example of a particular application, because, um, I feel like, um, I could use lard easily, or any kinda tallow, you know? All the saturated fats that are natural, but what kinda application are you, uh, looking to, uh, use particularly in? Is it like a, a, a butter frosting, or what is?
So, for us, it's been like our carrot cake, and it changed the texture of the actual cake. And it's still okay, but it crumbles more than it used to.
Yeah, unfortunately, and, and I really do think it's, it's got to do with the structure of the fat crystal, and I think you can really help, um, that with emulsifiers, um, some, some kinda emulsifier. If, if you reach out to people like, um, Pirato's or Dawn Foods, they would have emulsifier blends, try to do that, you know? I don't know what kind of a solution they would provide for you, but most of the time, it would be like a mono and diglyceride blend with a, um, a polydextrose of some sort, and that's gonna give you a firmer texture and less crumbliness. Because when you convert it from triglycerides to, um, the structure you have right now, um, which is, to me, in my mind, it's saturated to unsaturated, or some, some, some form, um, you really lose that crystal structure that gives you that bite, that gives you that moistness. So, that can actually be replaced by emulsifiers.
If some of these vegan items, when we're using emulsifiers in different, um, replacements for the eggs, and different replacements for some of the shortenings, then we're going away from having a clean label. What is my options if I wanna have a clean label, because I'm, my customers also want something that they understand what I put in it?
Correct, so that, that is a big challenge, and, um, I, I'm not sure if you consider, uh, alpha dextrains clean label, or emulsifiers clean label. At the same time, you know, they work, I'm not, I'm, but I'm not trying to push these. The ones that don't work are actually, you know, uh, normal, uh, natural providers of emulsifiers, like egg yolk is a normal provider of Lastithin, which is a nice emulsifier. Soybean, you know, it is also a natural emulsifier, soybean flour that you could use, but some people are, don't like soybeans on their label, you know? So, it really depends on what and how you define your customers, and what they can tolerate and what they can't tolerate. And, uh, emulsifiers at that level, you're talking about less than 1% baker's percent for mono and diglyceride usage, it's not a lot, you know? So, to me, I feel like for the small amount of, um, ingredient functionality, you know, I, I think that there is no danger in consuming these food ingredients. They're all, you know, they're all labeled for use in the US anyway. So, um, I think as a proprietor, you know, you can decide on whether you wanna use mono and diglycerides, and really, the kinda products you wanna produce. And, um, I feel like, if you tie your hands behind your back by not using mono and diglycerides, you are going to see products that cannot withstand shelf life, that cannot- that cannot withstand temperatures, you know? So it's, it's a big give and take situation. Yeah.
So what kind of shelf life can you get from some of these vegan items that you're experimenting with?
Yeah, with that Wecker Alphadextrans, you can see a shelf life of up to a week. Like I've, I've not gone past a week because I just, I think it can go longer. I just haven't tested it. When you talk about mono and diglycerides and shelf life, it's the stability, the ability to, to maintain that, that temperature fluctuation within your store, you know? So if you put something with mono and diglycerides, then you might not need to refrigerate it, you know, to preserve it. So, so with mono and diglycerides, I've seen shelf life gone from day one to day three, you know, a couple of days or so with mono and diglycerides. And that's to do with the texture, right? So anything that you use mono and diglycerides or emulsifiers, you should be able to store it at room temperature if it doesn't have dairy, dairy products in it. And that room temperature storage is very, very conducive to the emulsifier helping you extend the softness of the product.
In our case, that's something we need because we do wholesale to grocery stores and most of our product is on a shelf.
Correct. And, and I, you know, I encourage and I want you all to look at wholesale distribution as a way to really maintain the business for your retail locations. Maybe not for the entire variety of your offerings, but maybe one or two specialties, right? Just put it to wholesale. Because what COVID has taught us is like, don't depend just on one channel. You know, you got to build your channels. You got to be, you know, more resilient with industry fluctuation and trends, you know? So that's a great way to go Lynn, is just to make sure that you have a few products that go for the wholesale channel. And you do need shelf life extension solutions for that. Actually, we just finished two, two Baker View on shelf life. One is for bread and one is for cakes and they are available at our Baker Academy. And they're free to download for you to watch as well. So go to Baker Academy and look at the shelf life extension for cakes and bread.
Okay. Yeah, we've already been doing our breads. We aren't going as far as some of the commercial bakeries are because my son happens to work for Bimbo and he tells me what they can get in shelf life. And we're not going to try and beat them or go anywhere near that. But we did actually double our shelf life with some of the new enzymes we're using in our buns and breads. And it really makes a difference when you're selling to grocery stores.
At the end of the day, you don't want the returns and you don't want any complaints of mold. And the technology is available at your level, you know, to, to implement those things.
And most of those, you have basically a clean label because they're derivatives of wheat and other natural products.
Yeah, take a look at them on our pages. Culture wheat. We wrote a good deal on anti-microbial packaging. We wrote something on Nethymycin. Some people might not want to use Nethymycin, but I totally understand. But culture wheat is the way to go if you don't want to use calcium propionate. Anybody else?
The funny, you know, I, I obviously worked at RBA for about eight years and hearing all of these, like the newer terms come out, it sounds so Greek. Like it just sound, like all those words, like I don't know how to spell it. I don't know how to say it. So how do you as a baker, like what, what would you suggest? I mean, like you're offering something that may be healthier and have a longer shelf life, things like that. But as a retail baker, you know, presenting that to a customer? I love plant-based and, and I am a marketer's dream because if you put plant-based on anything, I, and it's a pretty package. I'll buy it, I'll try it. But if you put triglycerides and blah, blah, blahs and, you know, that kind of thing. So I'm curious for the bakers on the call, you know, how do you market this to your folks in Houston? And, and you know, Colorado, I can definitely see that that's maybe, especially right where you're at, is probably a little bit different of a base than like maybe a Houston would be. Or Brian and Paul are both East Coasters. So, and Lynn, Minnesota for sure that, you know, that's a different ballgame too. So it's, you know, are there some things that you've heard trend-wise that, you know, making this prettier for people, I guess? And you all can unmute yourselves if you want. We have a small enough group where we can unmute and still be cordial.
We actually have a, we just started developing our vegan line like about almost three years ago, really significantly. And we have developed a very large market for it. We were also lucky to have two restaurants in our shopping district that are both vegan restaurants open up in the last two years, one of which is like directly next door to us, basically. So we kind of been riding that wave. Plant-based is definitely, when we were first promoting it, was the terminology that we found to be really good for like, you know, making people want to come in, just that term in particular. It just, I guess, the connotation of it, people really vibed with it. But we have found that that market has just grown and grown from where we started it. And we did some, because there's a fair amount of like vegan and vegetarian bakeries and restaurants in the Denver metro area. And we did a little research and went around and sampled baked goods from some of them before we started and found that in our opinion, the bar was actually pretty low. And those places were already really popular. So we just, you know, ups the taste and texture with the, what we were already using for our significantly popular gluten-free, dairy-free line and did it better than them. And we've created a major following that we did not previously have with that line. So that's been in Denver anyway. It's a huge trend, so it's really been successful for us.
In Denver, for sure. What ingredients have you used, Lauren, in, in, in your mind that has really pushed the envelope on a customer acceptance?
Um, well, that's a good question. Trying to think what people have had issues with. I've had like weird things, like I just had a customer the other day ask if we bake our vegan items in like a separate oven from non-vegan things, which I thought was kind of strange. You know? I weirdly have never, I have not had someone ask about like the, or actually I know one thing, palm, palm fat. Because a lot of people who are vegan also are really, don't, you know, obviously support like the, God was sort of looking for. Like the, not farming, but you know, the like practices of palm and the effects it has on the rainforest. And they want us to be using like sustainable palm, which is like not really the same product. That's one ingredient that we've had an issue with, with vegan people, more from like a moral standpoint of like their whole lifestyle, I guess.
So this is what I would like to point out too, that I've seen with the vegan population is they are more technology, they, they receive technology better, you know? So for them, anything, the number one priority, if you can remember my list I gave you, the number one thing is animals and planet, right? But anything that you use to save the animals and planet is, is in their favor. I really do feel that this particular market is open, is really open to the new technology that we bring them. So I, all for like, that's why I'm saying I'm all for like Alphadextrans. I'm all for, you know, I found this new thing called maple fiber, you know, that talks about sustainability, that talks about the reusing of maple chips into maple fiber, you know? They are all open to these kind of stories. So it gives us a lot of room to work with in terms of innovation and finding new things to, you know, serve the vegan market as long as we keep away from that planet and animal, you know, part of things. That's, that's what I'm finding out too.
Which more do you charge for vegan item versus a non-vegan item?
Actually, they're the same, they're, they're more expensive. Though the ones, the ones I've seen that are egg-free are actually two times more expensive than the ones of eggs. I'm just like, wow.
Generally, like a, we do like a 30% markup generally on anything vegan versus like the traditional version.
That's pretty conservative, Lauren. I really think you could go higher with that. Because like I said, I see, when I go to the, the, the vegan bakery here in town, I'm just, I'm just floored by your prices, but their stuff is good. You know, you have to have good quality to be able to touch that much of a price. So a lot of people love their products because totally 100% animal-free and really good tasting, right? People recognize that, that brand and that taste and they're willing to pay for it. It's a lot to do with your brand also, yeah.
Does Three Brothers, do you all have any vegan products right now on the shelves?
We, we, we don't. We don't have any vegan products.
Okay. Something you're thinking about?
No, not really.
Texas is a little difficult, more of a difficult market.
Yeah, we're a little behind, so you know, it'll catch up in about 10 years. But we're, no, we're, we're not doing vegan. We've, we've been asked to do gluten-free, keto, all of those things. And we're just having such a hard time just keeping up with what we, we currently do. Because we do bread and rolls and cakes and cookies and Danish and all of those things. So it's just too many things. And to add more things, it, you've got to have, one, the ability to have this freezer space, to have another product line somewhere, to get your guys to actually produce it. And when they're already so tasked to do things, to get them to do more is, is just adding more people to the, to the pudding, if you will. And we don't want to add any more people to the pudding right now. So with this COVID thing going on.
Do you run on any contracts or contracts with institutions?
We, we pretty much strictly, well, okay. So we've had four floods, a hurricane and a fire. And I lost pretty much all of our commercial accounts that we had. We still have a few, but when you go through that, people don't want to wait for you. And you learn real quickly that you have to, like you say, pivot. And we pivot, we pivoted towards our customers and tried to do better customer service, better product, fresher product. And it's really worked for us. They've, they've come back, they've supported us. And that's been really, really a great thing. So I don't want to be in the wholesale business, you know? I found out a long time ago that they'll leave you for a nickel. And I do not want to be in that business.
And, and, and I think that's where I'm going is they'll leave you for a nickel, but innovation is what's going to keep you, right? So I, I think that a lot of, a lot of them will look at your different ways of innovating and keep you as part of their portfolio of vendors because, you know, who knows? The next vegan trend might take hold on the school system, right? So those kids, they want vegan, they're going to ask for vegan.
I mean, I need to look at it and, and, and really kind of see what, what the cost of the products are. That's why I asked, because there is a cost involved in making this stuff. And it is more expensive to make it. We used to, we used to make the macaroon cookies. And people don't realize how long they take to do and how much the ingredients are. And you just don't make that much money. So why am I doing this when I can buy it wholesale and, and not have to even touch it? So I don't.
Point out that the vegan trend is different, right? Unlike the gluten-free trend, unlike, you know, like a non-allergen egg-free or peanut-free, you really don't need to clean up your, your, your equipment. You don't need to have an ingredient segregation area. You know, it's actually much cheaper to go gluten-free, sorry, to go vegan than it is to go gluten-free. So it's not much of a hassle, you know, if you're thinking about that. It is definitely going to cost you more money to go gluten-free. So vegan is not so difficult if you think about it.
Paul, are you doing vegan stuff?
Nothing vegan, not yet anyway. We are thinking about it. We probably get three or four inquiries a week asking if we have any vegan items. So we started the same way with gluten-free also. We didn't think it was big. And actually, I started the same thing with kosher 30 years ago. I didn't think it was important to be kosher. And when we turned kosher, I found a whole following coming in.
Yeah.
So we've been thinking about it. The gluten-free, we're not doing the strict gluten-free with the segregation in the oven, separate oven and all that. But we're doing non-gluten ingredients, basically.
Good.
So there are a couple of Italian cookies. The pinoli cookies were already gluten-free. We already were making three or four different variations of those. So they took off. We got a brownie cookie mix from Able and Shaper, which is located here on Long Island. It's an excellent mix. And with those items, I mean, we're not knocking down doors or anything, but we do have a following. But I was interested in, in the vegan because there is a strong Middle Eastern population just to the north of us in about three or four towns. And there's only one bakery up there. And I think that's where all the inquiries are coming from.
Yeah, as, as you can see, the demographics for this vegan population is, is really coming. I have a 11-year-old and I can tell you, one out of three of his friends are vegan. For the sake of marketing, right? So they are all on TikTok. They're all on Instagram. And I tell you, if you like, just photo you, photograph your vegan cupcakes and vegan products on IG and TikTok, it will take off with that particular population. They will push the parents to go to your bakery to buy stuff, you know? No kidding, not one. I was surprised when I found so many of his friends were vegan, you know? So.
Well, people are asking, so there must be some kind of demand there.
Right.
So we have just about 10 minutes left. I knew this hour would fly by. Are there any last questions for Lynn? That we can get out of, you know, get in while we have the last 10 minutes?
If there are no questions, can I ask the question since this is a time call?
Sure.
My question, if, if you are willing to answer, is what is the number one innovation that you brought to your bakery last year?
Lots of hmms.
Yeah. How do you think? And if you haven't, what, what are you thinking about in the next year? You got to have at least four or five innovations that you bring to your bakery every year and only one's going to stick.
For us this year, probably, we introduced, we have, for years, people asked for savory items and we never had any. We only did sweets. We don't even do regular breads. But during COVID, we decided, because a lot of people were not, were like, the restaurants were all doing takeout anyway. We invested in a food warmer and started doing like a bratwurst wrapped in puff pastry and like kolache-style brats and kind of, and like krautburgers and things and offering them on the weekends. And then we started making kolaches, like breakfast ones with the eggs in them because we had a lot of people asking. And that has really taken off, actually. We were kind of surprised. It's probably here to stay now and it's like, fits well in our like niche too. It kind of fits with the brand. So that's been, we tried ice cream too, and that was a total failure for us. We don't have the right refrigeration. But yeah, savory items, that was our best innovation this year.
Amazing, thank you, Lauren. Savory, awesome. Anyone else?
We did the same thing. We did kolaches and turkey bacon and cheese kolaches. And this, this past year, after we lost our kosher license because of all that stuff. And that's really taken off tremendously well. So it's very surprising for us.
That's really neat. Anyone else?
We took a little bit different avenue for, instead of going for breakfast-type things, we were making different kinds of pocket sandwiches, putting the turkey and cheese into a brioche dough and making sandwiches that could be, or like a pocket that could be heated up for those parents that had kids at home and needed to have a quick and easy lunch. We did, you know, different kinds of meats. We did, you know, different kinds of meats and cheeses and we did some pizza ones.
Wow.
Some of them were sex, some of them not. Yep.
That's awesome.
We went to lunch instead of breakfast.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's an innovation that I I wish to see because, you know, now that the kids at home, we need to feed them and we take whatever the schools give us sometimes.
Our innovation was really packaging and technology. It wasn't bakery related at all.
So that you could extend the shelf life or could you?
No, no, not, it had nothing, it was not bakery related at all. It was, you know, the software and packaging.
Oh, okay. That's great. Anybody else who wants to like, let us know what innovation you've taken in the past year and what worked for you? Bernadette, you want to try?
You know what? Our bakeries around us actually have done a ton of savory and that is something that as a consumer is wonderful. So we're just not going anymore for our morning pastries now, we're going for afternoon and we're going to put things in the freezer that are, you know, I can pull out for a quick meal and things. So we actually did a town hall meeting on like take and bake and it really is surprising like just how much business that can add on to your bakery. I mean, you're sort of giving people another reason to come in the door. You know, and while I'm getting my savory, I'll also get my donuts and my cookies and my cakes and things like that. You know, things that I'd normally go in there for. So I love the idea of our bakery sort of expanding that and doing more savory.
I love to hear that and I hope if anything that you guys would think about putting a program together for, you know, catering to lunches, school lunches at your bakery, right? So, you know, that's an innovation that we all can look at this year. It's like, don't just sell, you know, pocket sandwiches, sell everything, you know, the 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 bag, the bag carrots, the bag, you know, coffee, own fruit, you know, just to cater for the kid to come, you know, to buy lunch, you know? How about that, you know? That's something to think about. I mean, that's something that all corner bakeries should be the cornerstones of of lunch and dinners, you know, when parents are not around. So hopefully I get to see that soon too around my area.
I know our school would really appreciate it. My son came home one time and said he didn't like gray hot dogs. So we would appreciate some good, healthy bakery goods in their lunch. So we are actually just about five minutes left, so I want to take the next five minutes really and thank Lynn and Bakerpedia for being our guest. Like I said, we have we have had Lynn and your team on so many of our education programs and you're always, always, always a wealth of knowledge. And if you haven't checked out the Baker Academy that they have on their site and all of the, you know, different resources they have on the Bakerpedia site, definitely do that. I mean, it's it's again, like Lynn had mentioned, there's really, you can Google things, yes, but why not get it from the source? Who's, you know, really knowledgeable? So Lynn, thank you so much for being our guest today, so.
You're welcome. Bernadette, do you have a few minutes after this that we'd like to?
For sure. Oh, for sure. Absolutely. I would like to thank everybody for coming on and and hopefully it was a good discussion. We have one now scheduled October and we also have another town hall meeting in November. So stay tuned for more details on both of those, so.
Thank you so much for planning this, Bernadette. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Sarah. Thanks so much. I hope everybody in Dallas fares well through the flooding.
Houston, Houston.
Houston. Oh, I can say, oh, I've got one.
Dallas, don't worry about Dallas.
Totally different. We're spreading the love and the prayers. Thank you, everybody. Bye bye.
Thank you.
Bye bye. Lynn, we'll take a few minutes and let everybody hop off and
Yeah, sure.
and we can chat.
Okay, so I wanted to talk to you about a possible partnership. I don't know if you have seen our Scale Up series?
I I have not actually. I'm trying to think. The last one I did was a Baker Academy thing, so I haven't seen that.
Take a look at our Scale Up series on the Baker TV channel on YouTube.
Okay.